Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The call for, the roll call for the February fourteenth regular scheduled meeting.
Councilor Cooperow.
Yeah.
Counselor Tenere Garcia. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Zaneda.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
And Counselor Judah Garcia.
Present.
Ten members present.
Excellent. Our next item on the agenda will now invite our city manager to provide the state of the city address.
So, thank you, Mr. President. First, I'm going to apologize in advance to this very large audience. I know you didn't come here to hear me make a fifteen-minute speech. And I hope I can get through this relatively quickly without boring you. But the council did, does give me once a year the opportunity to talk to them briefly about the state of the city and a preview of the year ahead. So, that's what I'm going to do. So, again, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I think when we were here a year ago around this time, kind of lamenting the very difficult 2020 that we had just been through, all of us had hoped that 2021 was going to be kind of a different and better kind of year, especially because at that time, large-scale vaccinations were sort of on the horizon. And even though we did a tremendous job of vaccinating our residents, unfortunately, the pandemic did not go away. And I think honestly, the most sensible belief about COVID among experts and others is that it's going to be with us for quite a while, probably as some sort of seasonable, seasonal respiratory virus that we're going to have to live with and adapt to on an annual basis with highs and lows, much as we've done with other viruses. And so, that doesn't portend some sort of bleak picture for the city. Because in fact, we are in a much better position, particularly with respect to this virus, than we were just a year ago. So, as I noted, over eighty-nine percent of our eligible residents are fully vaccinated. That's based on statistics from the Commonwealth from just last week. So, we are in a better position. That's a vaccination rate that exceeds the state average and far, far exceeds vaccination rates in most of the other twenty vaccine equity communities. We have a vaccine clinic that operates right here in the heart of our city at the senior center every single weekend with ample supply of vaccines for first shots, second shot, and boosters. We have testing, readily available COVID testing in the city, both a drive-through at Beth Israel and our own Stop the Spread site, which now is relocated next to Home Depot, which offers testing seven days a week. There was that period during the Omicron surge when lines were very long. But really, at this point, lines are quite manageable. Sometimes there's no lines at all. Testing is readily accessible in the city. And we're in the process of giving out thirty thousand of our own rapid antigen test kits. We're doing that. We're giving these out to community advocacy groups and to our residents. We had our first public distribution last week. We'll be doing public distributions probably each week for the next few weeks until we fully disperse the thirty thousand rapid test kits that we have. So, you know, we're in reasonably good shape. It's quite possible that as this virus moves from this pandemic to what people are calling the endemic stage, that it's going to surprise us a little more and require us to pivot in ways we can't yet anticipate. But if experience is any guide, this city will respond effectively. We've done it in the past and we'll do it again. So, I think what we're looking at now, what we need to focus on is the recovery from COVID. And when I say recovery, I'm talking about getting us back to and regaining for the city that sort of strong economic momentum that we had prior to the onset of COVID. And I really feel like we're in a really good position to do that. So, despite, we're particularly in a financial position to do that. So, despite all the pandemic-related spending that we did to help our constituents. And we probably spent here in the city almost twelve million dollars in pure, direct COVID relief to our residents in the form of rental assistance, food assistance, et cetera. Despite all that spending, we're still really in a good financially-secure financial position for the city. We still have over seventeen million dollars in our general stabilization account. We're about to get free cash certified probably in the next week or two. And I have every expectation that certification number is going to be north of ten million dollars. And we have forty million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act money. That is really a healthy financial balance sheet for a city the size of Chelsea. So, of course, task number one is for us to make effective spending decisions on this huge one-time infusion of federal dollars, this forty million, which really is a once-in-a-lifetime set of money. We're never going to see anything like that again. And so, for fifteen million of that funding, as you know, we hope to invest in social services. And we've entrusted the decision-making on that to our resident-led APA Community Advisory Committee. There are folks here in this audience who are part of that APA Community Advisory Committee. And I could tell you, I'm not exaggerating. This is without question the most robust resident engagement and APA spending going on anywhere in the Commonwealth. No one is getting this kind of resident input on APA spending like we are doing. I do expect recommendations coming from that group very shortly. That group has been meeting since, I think, late summer and is about to wrap up their deliberations in the next month and a half or so. But I can tell you that given the well-documented needs in our community, which you all know about, I think a large focus of their funding priorities is going to end up in the areas that you would anticipate. Things like spending money on food insecurity, on affordable housing, on rental assistance, small business assistance, and something of particular interest to me, and I'm going to talk about a little bit more towards the end of my comments, behavioral health support. So, that's the fifteen million. The balance of APA, that other twenty-plus million, I'm going to use, as I've said to the council, to support and expand upon our capital improvement program, capital projects in the city that benefit our residents. And remember, investment in our neighborhoods through the CIP, that was really a hallmark of our spending priorities pre-COVID. I'm going to continue to make that a priority post-COVID. And you can see that, you should be able to see that, in that CIP document that you have before you tonight. That document is probably the most robust, significant CIP that this city has seen in recent history. I mean, it's certainly the largest one I've ever submitted to the council. It includes over twenty-four million dollars of direct spending in fiscal year twenty-three. Twelve-point-three million of that coming from APA funds. And so, projects in there that will benefit the community include things like the complete renovation of Highland Park with new turf, the redoing all of that open playground area at the Williams School, full rehabilitation of Carey Avenue, continued rehabilitation of the Garden Cemetery, and the full rehab of that E-91 facility next door. But honestly, what I'm particularly proud of in that CIP you have before you is the inclusion in there of projects on climate resiliency and clean energy. Really, we are kind of leading the region in this climate change effort with our new North Suffolk Office of Resilience and Sustainability. And in just the first year, that office, which is, it covers Chelsea, Riviere, and Winthrop, but it's physically located right here in Chelsea City Hall, they've really pushed forward some substantial climate resiliency efforts. And some of that is reflected in the CIP. So, assuming this plan is funded by the council, and I certainly hope you will fully fund it, we'll commence work on a cloud-based microgrid project that'll bring solar panels and battery storage to City Hall and the police station. We're going to advance our full design for the major climate protection project at the mouth of the island and river. And we'll begin the process of designing the fortification of the Mill Creek areas from increased storm intensity over the next few years. All of this done to better protect ourselves from the inevitable increase in weather-related emergencies that we are going to see in the city because of climate change. So, we stand at the start of 2022 in very good financial health with this robust CIP plan to improve the lives of our residents, with COVID, I'd say, somewhat in retreat and transitioning from this sort of dangerous and threatening pandemic to something that's somewhat less worrisome, I think. So then, what are our major challenges? What are the things that I expect to be focusing on? So, for me, there are three. And this is where I'm going to be spending my time and attention over the course of the next year or so, and I want to talk about each of them. So, the first for me remains our housing crisis. Now, that certainly isn't limited to Chelsea. This is a regional problem, the housing crisis, but it definitely looms large here in the city of Chelsea. And I've long said, you've heard me say this, that the best way you can address a housing crisis is to build more housing. That is a simple solution, but it is the most effective solution. And thankfully, I'm telling you, we are doing that, including some real major housing developments on which we're going to see some real progress in calendar year 2022. And some of them are going to add significantly to our affordable housing stock. So, you've got the development at the Omidus site at 1005 Broadway across from Walgreens. That's going to add thirty-eight new affordable units to the city's housing stock. Twenty-five Sixth Street, right down here, is going to start construction this year. That is sixty-two additional affordable housing units, six of which are homeownership units. Our project, the city's project, at the old Salvation Army site on Broadway, that's going to have twenty-eight affordable units, ten of which are homeownership. There's the 361 Broadway project that was just before the ZBA the other night. That's going to add forty-two combination of affordable workforce development units on Broadway. Then there's the Innis redevelopment. That project is finally going to actually break ground this construction season. That's three hundred and thirty new mix of affordable and workforce development units, including ninety-six brand-new units for our public housing tenants. That list doesn't even include other housing, mostly market-rate housing that's under development. We have the four hundred units coming onboard at Vera across from Chelsea High School. We've got the twenty units under construction at Twenty-five Sixth Street. You've got another thirty under construction at the old Sainte-Sanislaus Church. So, this is a lot of good housing development that's, I hope, going to make a dent in our problem. Honestly, I still think we still do have to do more. And there's two initiatives I'm going to be presenting this year that I think will help chip away at the problem. Neither one is monumental, but they're both small efforts that I think can help. So, the first one, I have not given up on my desire to have the council consider changes in the density in the R1 and R2 zoning districts. What I committed to is that we would commence a public engagement process with residents before I resubmitted any proposals to the Commonwealth. And we are about to start that community engagement process in the month of March. We have a, we're going to have help from CHAPA, which is a statewide affordable housing nonprofit. They're going to assist us in facilitating these community conversations about zoning in the R1 and R2 zoning district. And what I really hope is that we can find some compromise. Some compromise among advocates for housing, among residents, among counselors for some tweaking of the density in these two R1 and R2. They're the two major zoning districts. They encompass the majority of the city. I just, I honestly, I simply don't believe that those districts, as they're currently constituted in our zoning ordinance, I don't think that they are reasonable given the pressing housing needs that exist in our community. So, that's one thing. I'm going to resubmit some zoning change to you after we engage in this community conversation during the springtime. The second thing I'm going to do is I'm actually going to do some, propose to the council, some selected acquisition of some vacant parcels in the city that we could turn over to our Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board for affordable homeownership opportunities, even if that means doing it by eminent domain. This is going to require some, of course, council approval and probably some appropriation of significant acquisition costs. But I do think there are a couple of isolated opportunities that exist out there in the city for transforming some vacant parcels. And I hope to make at least some submission to the council by sometime in the spring, end of spring, on a couple of parcels. So, I'm hoping the council will approve that. So, that's challenge number one is housing. The second challenge I see is restoring developer interest in the city. Now, I just went on describing the great developer interest there is for housing. And we've done a good job on that. But where we've, where I have, I will admit, I fall in short, is getting developer interest in the commercial industrial sector. Some of it is due to COVID. I mean, there was a lot of interest in the city. And there were certain projects that were in the, that were at least in the discussion phase before COVID hit. And so, our task is to renew that commercial developer interest in the city with the focus for me on three areas that I want to all talk about briefly. The waterfront, the downtown, and what I'll call the sort of Market Basket area, what some people refer to as West Chelsea, that area in and around Market Basket and the Stop and Shop. So, I just want to talk briefly about each of them. So, with respect to the waterfront, I actually think we're going to see some progress on development on our waterfront this coming year. First of all, the major redevelopment of Twenty-two Willow, which is right across from the waterfront off of Marginal Street. That's a major industrial parcel. That redevelopment is actually already fully permitted. And we've just learned that the demolition of that existing building for replacement by a brand-new, you know, high-end industrial building, that's likely to happen in the summer. The last tenant is scheduled to move out of that building at the end of June. And that, as I said, that's going to bring some modern industrial space to the city, which will be a good thing. A similar large-scale, state-of-the-art industrial building is proposed for 295 Eastern Ave. That's the large vacant parcel across from the Burke Complex. What's, that project also has started permitting. They filed with the MEPA office already for that proposal. That project's of particular benefit to the city because not only is it going to generate a lot of good tax dollars on what's currently a vacant parcel of land and really not generating anything more than minimal taxes for the city. That project has particular interest because it's going to improve waterfront access in the city because its plans include construction of a new, fully-accessible public walkway along the entire shoreline that is part of that property. So, that's something that I'm, I think, will be a real benefit to the community. Of course, we're not going to free up all our potential on the waterfront until that municipal harbor plan that you agreed to submit to the state many, many months ago is finally approved. That's been an arduous permitting process with some of the state agencies, particularly with coastal zone management. But I'm actually optimistic that we are going to finally get state approval of that plan, hopefully by this summer. Another area of my attention, in addition to the waterfront, is to no surprise to this council, the downtown. So, we've really put a lot of effort in trying to ensure that our downtown commercial corridor doesn't suffer any long-term negative impacts from the pandemic. And so, I mentioned two housing projects, which I think are going to help the downtown, the Salvation Army and 361 Broadway. They're going to help create that kind of density and activity that you need for a vibrant business district. So, I think that's a step in the right direction. But in addition to those projects, I want the city to, and will be advocating for the city, to do some real, more direct investment in the downtown. So, more sort of investment in the public art, hopefully with the kind of impact that beautiful mural on Fifth Street has had. I want to continue to support and help restaurants do outdoor dining in the downtown. We want to do some more infrastructure improvements in the downtown. And two of them will happen this season. Complete redevelopment of the remaining area of Cherry Street and the redevelopment of that section of Second Street between Broadway and Winter Summit, between the two parks. We're going to be redeveloping that stretch of Second Street. And finally, I want to invest in more events in the downtown. Events that'll attract not just developers, but residents to come and enjoy our downtown. Now, all of that, of course, requires money. So, once I have free cash certified, I will be coming to the council with another requested round of funding to support the downtown. And I'm hopeful that the council will approve it because that really, for me, is the only way you can ensure that there remains vitality in that commercial corridor. The final area we're going to focus on this year for economic activity is, as I said, that Market Basket area. Now, we all know the new commuter rail station opened up behind Market Basket in the last couple of months. I'm hoping that's going to be the impetus for some renewed developer interest in that area. But there's two things the city's going to do to try to jumpstart that. So, the first is, we received a grant from the state to do an economic development study for that area. And we're going to commence that study in the next month or two. And that's going to be a study that's going to, the goal of which is to engage all of the commercial stakeholders in that area, figure out what their plans are, identify whatever barriers exist for them moving forward with their plans, really just try to get some momentum in their minds for moving forward with development. So, that study effort, that engagement effort, is going to commence in the next month or two. The grant has already been secured by the city. The second thing I'm going to be recommending is that we expand, and I'll be coming to the council with a recommendation for this, that we expand that new mixed-use overlay district that we just approved last year. Now, if you remember, we created this mixed-use overlay district in that area in response to the plan, to Everett's planned redevelopment of that Stop and Shop site. So, that Stop and Shop building is coming down. There's a massive redevelopment proposed on that parcel, almost all of which exist in Everett. But we wanted to try to get some benefit out of that development. So, we created this mixed-use overlay district to encompass that Chelsea piece of that and some surrounding area in the hope that we might benefit. Now, it is a little too early to tell whether we will benefit from that. I hope we do. But that mixed-use overlay district remains there and is a good step. This year, we have a slightly different problem facing us that I'm going to rely upon that district to help us try to solve. And that is, some of you may have heard of this, we are now under this new state mandate to create a new zoning that meets this housing choice regulation, this brand-new regulation from the Department of Housing and Community Development that's applicable only to so-called MBTA communities. So, if you're an MBTA community, meaning you have a rapid transit line or a bus line or a subway line, a stop in your community, you now have some new zoning mandates that you have to meet or else face what are significant penalties. The penalties are that if you don't meet this new zoning in and around transit nodes, you are going to be precluded from applying for state capital grant opportunities, the most significant one of which is the MassWorks grant. So, we rely heavily on MassWorks. We've done it, all sorts of major projects with Massports in this city long before I came. The most recent one, we're using MassWorks dollars to help us with all of the infrastructure redevelopment in Central and Willow to support the Innis redevelopment. That grant will no longer be available to any community that fails to meet this new zoning regulation. And it's a pretty strict requirement. So, for a community like Chelsea that has rapid transit bus stations, and that's what we have, the Silver Line is a rapid transit bus line. In order to meet this zoning requirement, you need to have a zoning district around one of those stops that allows housing by right of fifteen units per acre and is fifty acres in size. So, a zoning district has to exist that's fifty acres in size and allows by right, not by special permit, but by right, fifteen units an acre. And believe it or not, even in a community that I think is as housing-friendly as Chelsea is, we do not currently have a zoning district that meets that requirement. We have a few zoning districts that allow fifteen or more eight, units by right per acre, but none of them are the size of fifty acres. So, to solve that problem, what I'm going to propose to the council is that we expand this mixed-use overlay district from where it exists right now, which is Stop and Shop in that little triangle near the high school, expand it to cover the Market Basket area, the hotel development, and those parcels that currently are occupied by One North. Nothing into the neighborhoods, just where One North sits, the hotel area, the Market Basket area. That will be fifty-plus acres. That will solve this MBTA community zoning problem without any significant impact on residential neighborhood. There's a myriad of ways you could solve this. You could take the R2 district and solve it there. But the way to solve it, in my opinion, with a minimal amount of impact on residents is to just expand that overlay district to those commercial areas in and around the new commuter rail station. And I will be proposing that to the council. The second benefit of that, I think it will send a good message to those commercial owners in that area that we're really trying to encourage development. And I'm really hoping that something good will come of this, that we might actually see some decent commercial development in that commercial zone before the end of 2022. I hope that's true because, as I've said many times, it's development, and particularly commercial industrial development, that offers sort of the best hope of reducing the tax burden on residential property owners but still allow us to thrive economically, notwithstanding what are real financial constraints imposed upon every community by proposition two and a half. The final challenge, so, we talked about housing, we talked about economic development. The final challenge, as I see, is in our school department. Now, our relationship with the school department honestly has never been better. We've collaborated with them on pandemic response, on vaccines, on testing of their students, on communication of COVID-related issues. Our relationship with Dr. Abada, Superintendent Abada, and her leadership team is outstanding. And I certainly have no qualms about the, the sort of academic things that are going on in that school department. I have complete faith that Dr. Abada, her leadership team, and the school committee will make decisions that are in the best interest of the school system and our children. It's the non-academic area. Where this school department needs help, I think where perhaps every school department in the whole nation needs help, is in the non-academic area of mental health and behavioral health support. The isolation, the stress, the mental deterioration that has occurred, been brought about by this pandemic, that's a crisis for all age group, but it really has been particularly acute among school-aged children. And this is a place where the city really does need to step in to help our school. And this is a place where the city really does need to step in to help our school department. We've already done some good work with them in this area. Last year, Dr. Abada came to the city and asked us to take part in and help her create what's called this Children's Cabinet, and that kind of operates similar to the hub, brings together all these children's service providers on a regular basis. We meet about once a month, we collaborate on problems, we identify gaps that exist in the service world. So we do have this start. It's once these gaps are identified and there's some priority to some service models, that's where I think the city needs to step in and help. Now, I certainly don't have the specifics of how we're going to help at this point. I don't know how you tackle this mental health issue. It's certainly not a problem with any easy solutions, but assuming that through this Children's Cabinet or otherwise, we are able to come to some consensus on some service models that then need some funding, I'm committing the city to step in and provide that funding, probably with Opera dollars. I really do think that behavioral health support is likely to emerge from this resident-led Opera Committee as a high priority for them. So that's sort of where we stand at the start of 2022. I mentioned housing, I mentioned economic development, I mentioned behavioral health issues. These are by no means new problems in the city of Chelsea, but they were all exacerbated by COVID. And unfortunately, COVID is here to stay. We're going to have to learn to live with it, and it's going to continue to present challenges to us. But, you know, conquering big challenges has sort of been this city's narrative since it emerged from receivership over the last two decades. It has successfully met all those challenges. I have no doubt that this next decade will be the same, that working together will meet all of these challenges. And I'm really excited to be your city manager over the next two years and work with you to make sure this city succeeds, makes progress, and reaches its highest potential.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. We'll now move on to our next part of our city agenda, city council agenda, which is memoriam's and celebratory resolutions. We have a celebratory resolution introduced by Council Robinson, Robinson de Jesus, Council de Maldonado, Council de Zaneta regarding February as Black History Month.
Whereas in 1926, famed American historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson established Negro History Week to celebrate Black history accomplishments, diversity, and achievements. And whereas Carter G. Woodson valued education and believed that it was never too late to learn, it is beneficial for all Americans to continue to learn about the heritage and the experiences of all Americans. And whereas it is through learning that we become enlightened and come to understand each other more clearly. Whereas Black History Month allows for discussions of our country's legacy and slavery, institutional and structural racism. And whereas this year's theme for 2022 Black History Month is Black Health and Wellness, and we are honoring Mr. Juan Gallego, Ms. Rochelle Cromwell, Ms. Nicole McCoy, Ms. Laurie Moore, Mr. Paul Revere Smith, Ms. Sarah Arman, for their leadership in advocating for mental health and wellness. And now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby recognizes February as Black History Month, Black family, leadership, and service. Thank you to the Lewis H. Latimer Society, Bunker Hill Community College, Reverend Sandra Whitely, Chelsea Public Schools, and the Chelsea Black Community for their contributions to the city of Chelsea and beyond.
Council Robinson.
Adopted unanimously under suspension, I'd just like to congratulate all the recipients for their tireless work within our community, working to make our community a much better community. And I want to thank you for that, but I'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Smith, who's been very active in our community for a lot of years. I won't say how old he is, but he's been doing it for a long time. The other person I'd like to single out, as we all know how easy it is for us to go to the kitchen and turn on the water faucet and get some water. Juan Gallego, for the past several years, has been digging wells in Columbia to provide water assistance for people who cannot get to areas where they're able to seek water. So I'd like to congratulate Juan on the work that he does, and he raises a lot of money for this to happen. I just wanted to be able to say that. Thank you. To all the recipients, thank you for being who you are.
Council Garcia, and then Council Vito.[942.35][942.35][applause]
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for my colleagues for making this presentation. I know that today we are celebrating trailblazers and their accomplishments, but I want to take a moment to really celebrate the Chelsea Black community. You guys have been instrumental. You have given so much.[968.88][968.88][applause] You have given so much to Chelsea, cultural-wise, investment-wise, but above all, you guys really did rise to the occasion when we really needed you during this pandemic. I have seen you guys run that vaccination site in a way that is remarkable, in a way that is respectable.[991.73][991.73][applause] I commend you for all you do. I commend you for all those educational sessions that you held during the pandemic to educate our people, to go out there and get vaccinated, the sort of community and the way you hugged our community, to educate us and to get us informed and to get us out there and to stand there in the cold and inform people and answer questions. That is something that is beautiful and that is just one reflection of your years and years of service. So I do agree with that. This month is about Black History Month, it's about the Black family, it's about leadership, it's about service, and you showcase that in every single way. So I commend all of you, I congratulate our trailblazers, but I commend our Black History Month to you guys for making it possible and for really teaching us the lesson of what it is to serve and to serve with love. So thank you, thank you.[1051.58][1051.58][applause]
Council Vito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanted to echo the sentiments of my sister councillor. I have seen Joan Cromwell, you know, we see leaders constantly on social media, on the news and pictures, but it's the leaders that are behind the scenes that are actually, actually making more leaders that are the ones that often go unnoticed. And I see Joan Cromwell constantly advocating and pushing and making sure, and talk about the real issues that exist in this community.[1087.01][1087.01][applause] And talk about the real issues that are in this community. And so I just wanted to make sure that I tip my hat off to you, Sister. I appreciate you for how you show up in this world, for how you, how you create more leaders, how you empower people around you. You are everything. And this is my favorite part of being a city councillor, because there's a bunch of self-proclaimed leaders, but this is like the People's Choice Awards, right? This is like the people saying, this is who we know is doing the work. And so I just, I want to say a couple of comments here. I know that at the height of the pandemic, when the George Floyd protests were happening across this country, and the young people from the CBC got together to organize the Black Lives Matter March in here, Juan Gallego called me and said, I want to get snacks, I want to support. And so I called Joan, I was like, look, Juan Gallego, that's leadership. People who are going to show up, not because they're being asked to, not because the cameras are on, but when no one is looking. Rochelle Cromwell and her husband, who sits right next to her, and I'm just going to talk about Sarah Arman at the same time, because I don't want to make this sad, but when you live in intersection, you celebrate transition, so it's okay. I had a niece that was murdered last August, right on Garfield Street, in front of the Arman house and close to Rochelle, Rochelle's home. And I was out, I was in Ohio seeking medical care, and I drove back because, you know, for services. And I remember parking a chair, I could barely walk, I parked a chair right in front of the memorial that sits right in front of the Arman household. And Rochelle coming out with her husband and talking to me and crying with me and talking about what their experience was when they encountered that brutal scene that night. That's community. That is what we should be highlighting, the way we show up for each other, because it's coming from here and not because the cameras are on. The Arman family, I can't even put into words how many times when we go out there to mourn at the memorial of my niece, how many times they've come out and brought us water. Sarah has even given me the code to her home so I can go inside and use. That is the community that I am talking about. They, these folks right here have come out and cried with my family. I didn't experience anything alone. My family didn't experience anything alone, because we are a community. And so I just really just want to acknowledge the Chelsea Black community, period, for the way that you all show up in this community, when community leaders don't even show up to your events, and y'all keep trucking. And then there's an issue, and you guys keep on trucking. Thank you.[1249.33][1249.33][applause] Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you all for your leadership, thank you all for how you show up when the cameras aren't on. Thank you so, 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 so much for leading by example. It makes it so easy for people like me to be here. So I love y'all, I respect y'all.[1263.08][1263.08][applause]
Council Brown.
Mr. President, I wanted to congratulate everyone. Each year, we celebrate Black History Month. This year is no different than the other. We have celebrated the heroes. Those honorees tonight are being recognized for their work and their spirit of keeping Black history alive and the work that Black history celebrates and demonstrates. So I just want to congratulate you all, I want to congratulate my good friend Laura. And again, as some of the speakers said, it's true. A lot of these folks is being recognized tonight, a lot of these folks is being, receiving these awards, are folks that you probably don't even know in the community, but they're out there, they're doing their part to make this fabric, to blend this community together. And I just really want to just thank you, thank the CBC for the work that they do to just bring this to highlight, that we can see it, not just hear about it, but tonight is a great night as we grow and as we're in the middle of February, which is Black History Month. We can all be home celebrating Valentine's, but we're here tonight celebrating the history and the work of these folks here. And I want to appreciate you all, to let you know you all appreciate it for being here tonight.
Seeing other comments, at this moment, I will ask that we will be suspending the meeting so that the Council Robinson can present the differing recognitions, the certificates to the awardees, and will allow for picture-taking. So I'll let Council Brown just name everything and what each certificate says.
Black Health and Wellness, if you can come forward, Juan.[1380.95][1380.95][applause]
Counsel.
I also want to say thank you to you guys on a personal level. My son and my nephew played and, you know, my son is in first grade. So it was quite amusing watching him, you know, learn how to play football and as a mom standing on the sidelines like, ah! But genuinely speaking, it definitely, definitely brought this sense of confidence to my young boy. And he loves football and he watches football now for, like, while he's having breakfast and stuff. Like, this never happens in my household before. So this is new and, you know, I thank you guys because this, these are things that you guys instilled in terms of these type of values. And not only is it a game, but it's, you know, that sportsmanship and, and I truly appreciate that in, in, in terms of what it taught my, my boys, well, my son and my nephew and my other son who was also there all the time with my youngest son. So I just thank you and, and I look forward to having my son and anyone else in the community. I truly, truly, you know, would advocate for them to participate in this program because it's truly, truly a great program. So thank you.
Counsel Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I will say, you know, I, I don't know what it's like to be a mom and I don't know what it's like to send a kid off to, to play and watch from the stands, but I can say that I, I know the value of sports in our community and I know, and I also want to commend you all for the emotional investment that you put into this because it's not only coaching kids, it's mentoring them as well. It's also putting an emotional investment to, to listen to them and their needs off the field. So I commend you for, for the work that you do, that you've been doing for years in our community. And I am sure and I have no doubt that there will be a star one day who will make it at some point to the NFL or one of these big league games and, and hopefully it's, it's one of our own, it's one from Chelsea. So thank you for the work that you do and the time that you invest to really uplift our, our children. And as Counsel Robinson mentioned, it's, it's a great mechanism of prevention to make sure that our kids are just doing the right thing and investing their time in, in quality sports. So thank you.
Counsel Recupero, Counsel Taylor.
I'm sorry, I got bad knees. So I can't climb up and down. Right now they're hurting me. But I would like to say thank you for what you do. I know my children and grandchildren, as you know very well, knowing my son, they're all coached, they were all part of it. My granddaughters are cheerleaders and for a little while you couldn't practice in Chelsea, you didn't even have a team in Chelsea. Is your team back in Chelsea now? Are you back here? Is there any, anything any of us can do? You know, I know there is a fund that's there for yous if yous need it. Yous can get it. It's there for all the teams of Chelsea. I don't know how much they utilize this fund, but it's there. And I hope that yous can go and get some to give some of the children that are with yous or even the cheerleaders which are part of yous. I don't know, did your cheerleaders go to Florida to cheer?
Counsel, there's no back and forth. There's no back and forth.
No, okay. I'm, I'm not sure if your cheerleaders went to Florida, but I know that some cheerleaders went to Florida and I don't know if they were from Pride. But I hope that whatever yous need and whatever us councils can do for yous, it's a good thing because yous try to help the community and the children. Without the children of our community to have something to do, there's really, and what you do is a good thing. You at least give them something to do. And I know therefore fact because my children, like I said before, and my grandchildren and my kids, they all did it. And I hope you continue with your great work and thank you for your service to the community.
Counsel Taylor.
So I just want to personally say thank you for what you guys did for my son Finn and he was involved with Chelsea Pride and was a great experience. And those kids really learn about teamwork and about teammates and about winning and losing, you know? It's, it's, it's important for kids to, to know how to lose too, you know? It really builds, builds character and tries to, you know, prepare them for life. But you guys do a great job and you can always count on us to help whatever you guys need. All you gotta do is call and ask. Thank you.
Just real quick. Earlier tonight, we were having a discussion about the role city councilors have and about salaries. And why I bring this up is because I read about how you forgave the, the registration fees this year so that the kids can play. And I know that it just, everything that is done in communities like Chelsea is just so much harder than, and more, and a lot of other communities. It's even sports, even running a youth sports league. It doesn't go unnoticed to me and I'm sure many of how, you know, different leagues are out there canning right here at City Hall. I know it's a struggle to raise money, you know, in a, in a community that, you know, there are other priorities in a family and, you know, it's difficult. And it just makes the coach, the idea of coaching that much more difficult, but that just makes it that much more appreciated that the work you guys do. And, and why I'm trying to raise this point is, you know, Counsel Recupero said that maybe there was a fund there. There really isn't a fund that is under city control, but tonight there will be legislation that I'm importing, you know, putting on to the agenda. And it's a mitigation fund. And I stipulated that in a subcommittee meeting, other communities have this sort of fund and then it sometimes goes to sports programming so the counselors or the council can give back to these very same programs that are outside of, you know, another avenue. So I tie everything all together and just say, I appreciate the, the work you've done and there are those who see you and are looking to find ways to help you do a better job. And I thank you.
Just briefly. Jules Garcia mentioned about an athlete being able to go on to the next level. Actually, one Sunday morning while I was down watching a game, it was a young man, a very little, little boy who was, to me, was outstanding. Was very fast, running back and forth, up and down. It happened to be Melinda's son. I had no idea who it was. And I was standing on the sidelines and I said, who is that kid? It turned out to be Melinda's son. I mean, he, he was outstanding. He just blew me away, you know? Well, he's starting, he's starting at the right time. All right. All right. If I can ask you guys to come forward?
At this time, we'll suspend the rule so that the, the, you guys can come up to receive the award and, and take a picture with us. Thank you. Counsel. We'll now return to our meeting and go on to the next item on agenda, ID 22R22, a celebratory resolution introduced by Counsel Robinson regarding Chelsea Pride Football Recognition. Whereas Chelsea Pride Football was first started in 2008, since then Chelsea Pride Football is a member of the Northeast Commonwealth Youth Football and Cheer League. Chelsea Pride Football is led by President Lou Santina and Vice President Sean O'Regan and Board of Directors. With no football in 2020 due to the pandemic, leadership decided to offer free registration to its, to its players during the hard times of the 2021 season. Chelsea Pride Football has a total of 16 coaches for four teams and those four teams have had a total of 70 players who've had a great season. At their annual banquet, Chelsea Pride Football presented the Martin Scott Sportsmanship Award to two Chelsea Pride Football players. The Martin Sportsmanship Award is dedicated to Martin Scott, a great guy who was always there cheering on every player and was Chelsea Pride, Chelsea Pride Football's biggest fan. Chelsea Pride Football also presented the Darren Moore Coaches Award to the seventh and eighth grade player for showing leadership, dedication, and strong worth ethic. This award is in memory of Darren Moore, who was a coach for the seventh and eighth grade team. Each team practices three times a week. Before the season starts, Chelsea Pride Football conducts core backgrounds on all coaches to ensure and satisfy, to ensure the safety of the children. Chelsea Pride Football is a grade-based league that offers flag football for first and second graders, tackle football for third through eighth graders. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, on behalf of the residents of the City of Chelsea, wish to go on record so as to recognize the hard work and dedication that the coaches, the Board of Directors put in each and every year in order to make Chelsea Pride Football the program the success that it is. Once again, congratulations and continued success introduced by Counsel Leo Robinson and all members of the City Council. Counsel Robinson.
Hi, doctor, you're named as the under suspension. Actually, I've been supporting Chelsea Pride for a number of years. I think they do an excellent job and I think as a community, it's about prevention and people don't understand that they practice quite a bit before they can even, I think they have to practice like eight weeks before they can even get a helmet and shoulder pads to be able to, be able to get involved and, and, and participating in the program. I support it because I believe in prevention. I believe that if the kids are busy doing activities, that's less time for them to be able to get into things that they shouldn't be getting into. Being a former athlete, I know what it takes about playing and about caring for your body and making sure that you're doing the right thing at all times. So I just want to congratulate Chelsea Pride for the work that you're doing in our community for our kids. And you'll have continued support from this council and many other councils that come from behind us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate the maker of the motion for this resolution, but I want to congratulate the guys that do the work, the two brother, O'Regan brothers. And I know you mentioned the other player here, but one person you don't mention here is Michael Lopez, who has been a big supporter of this program from day one and worked with those two brothers. And every event that I go to, I see all three of them. If it's not four of them with the young man that's mentioned here, it's those three there. And they're always out there working to try to get the support from the community to help make it easier burden for those that want to play football. A few years ago, when the other program kind of went under, this program emerged and they worked and they worked and they've been out there. I want to thank you for your dedication, thank you for your service. I know they do all types of small events, they don't look for recognition, but they just want to make sure that the kids have a nice, safe place to go and practice football, learn the game of football and keep the young men and women in a right perspective and a positive surroundings. I want to thank you two brothers and Michael Lopez tonight and the rest of your organization. As you know, you can always count on me, but you guys do all the work and I appreciate your time and your effort and your dedication to our youth in the City of Chelsea. Thank you.
Counsel Vega Maldonado.
I also want to say thank you to you guys on a personal level. My son and my nephew played and, you know, my son is in first grade. So it was quite amusing watching him, you know, learn how to play football and as a mom standing on the sidelines like, ah! But genuinely speaking, it definitely, definitely brought this sense of confidence to my young boy. And he loves football and he watches football now for, like, while he's having breakfast and stuff like, this never happens in my household before. So this is new and, you know, I thank you guys because this, these are things that you guys instilled in terms of these type of values. And not only is it a game, but it's, you know, that sportsmanship and, and I truly appreciate that in, in, in terms of what it taught my, my boys, well, my son and my nephew and my other son who was also there all the time with my youngest son. So I just thank you and, and I look forward to having my son and anyone else in the community. I truly, truly, you know, would advocate for them to participate in this program because it's truly, truly a great program. So thank you.
Counsel Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I will say, you know, I, I don't know what it's like to be a mom and I don't know what it's like to send a kid off to, to play and watch from the stands, but I can say that I, I know the value of sports in our community and I know, and I also want to commend you all for the emotional investment that you put into this because it's not only coaching kids, it's mentoring them as well. It's also putting an emotional investment to, to listen to them and their needs off the field. So I commend you for, for the work that you do, that you've been doing for years in our community. And I am sure and I have no doubt that there will be a star one day who will make it at some point to the NFL or one of these big league games and, and, and hopefully it's, it's one of our own, it's one from Chelsea. So thank you for the work that you do and the time that you invest to really uplift our, our children. And as Counsel Robinson mentioned, it's, it's a great mechanism of prevention to make sure that our kids are just doing the right thing and investing their time in, in quality sports. So thank you.
Counsel Recupero, Counsel Taylor.
I'm sorry, I got bad knees. So I can't climb up and down. Right now they're hurting me. But I would like to say thank you for what you do. I know my children and grandchildren, as you know very well, knowing my son, they're all coached, they were all part of it. My granddaughters are cheerleaders and for a little while you couldn't practice in Chelsea, you didn't even have a team in Chelsea. Is your team back in Chelsea now? Are you back here? Is there any, anything any of us can do? You know, I know there is a fund that's there for yous if yous need it. Yous can get it. It's there for all the teams of Chelsea. I don't know how much they utilize this fund, but it's there. And I hope that yous can go and get some to give some of the children that are with yous or even the cheerleaders which are part of yous. I don't know, did your cheerleaders go to Florida to cheer?
Counsel, there's no back and forth.
Huh?
There's no back and forth. Just...
No, okay. I'm, I'm not sure if your cheerleaders went to Florida, but I know that some cheerleaders went to Florida and I don't know if they were from Pride. But I hope that whatever yous need and whatever us councils can do for yous, it's a good thing because yous try to help the community and the children. Without the children of our community to have something to do, there's really, and what you do is a good thing. You at least give them something to do. And I know therefore fact because my children, like I said before, and my grandchildren and my kids, they all did it. And I hope you continue with your great work and thank you for your service to the community.
Counsel Taylor.
So I just want to personally say thank you for what you guys did for my son Finn and he was involved with Chelsea Pride and was a great experience. Those kids really learn about teamwork and about teammates and about winning and losing, you know? It's, it's, it's important for kids to, to know how to lose too, you know? It really builds, builds character and tries to, you know, prepare them for life. But you guys do a great job and you can always count on us to help whatever you guys need. All you gotta do is call and ask. Thank you.
Just real quick. Earlier tonight, we were having a discussion about the roles city councilors have and about salaries. And why I bring this up is because I read about how you forgave the, the registration fees this year so that the kids can play. And I know that it just, everything that is done in communities like Chelsea is just so much harder than, and more, and a lot of other communities. It's even sports, even running a youth sports league. It doesn't go unnoticed to me and I'm sure many of how, you know, different leagues are out there canning right here at City Hall. I know it's a struggle to raise money, you know, in a, in a community that, you know, there are other priorities in a family and, you know, it's difficult. And it just makes the coach, the idea of coaching that much more difficult, but that just makes it that much more appreciated that the work you guys do. And, and why I'm trying to raise this point is, you know, Counsel Recupero said that maybe there was a fund there. There really isn't a fund that is under city control, but tonight there will be legislation that I'm importing, you know, putting on to the agenda. And it's a mitigation fund. And I stipulated that in a subcommittee meeting, other communities have this sort of fund and then it sometimes goes to sports programming so the counselors or the council can give back to these very same programs that are outside of, you know, another avenue. So I tie everything all together and just say, I appreciate the, the work you've done and there are those who see you and are looking to find ways to help you do a better job. And I thank you.
Just briefly. Jules Garcia mentioned about an athlete being able to go on to the next level. Actually, one Sunday morning while I was down watching a game, it was a young man, a very little, little boy who was, to me, was outstanding. Was very fast, running back and forth, up and down. It happened to be Melinda's son. I had no idea who it was. And I was standing on the sidelines and I said, who is that kid? It turned out to be Melinda's son. I mean, he, he was outstanding. He just blew me away, you know? Well, he's starting, he's starting at the right time. All right. All right. If I can ask you guys to come forward?
At this time, we'll suspend the rule so that the, the, you guys can come up to receive the award and, and take a picture with us. Thank you.
and down. It happened to be Melinda's son. I had no idea who it was. And I was standing on the sidelines and I said, "Who is that kid?" It turned out to be Melinda's son. I mean, he, he was outstanding. He just blew me away, you know? He started, he started at the right time. All right. All right. If I can ask you guys to come forward?
At this time, we'll suspend the rules so that the, the, you guys can come up to receive the award and, and take a picture with us. Thank you. Tenemos, tenemos bastante. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. At this time, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We will open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing to discuss the, the proposed eminent domain temporary easement taking on Broadway. A copy of the homeroom petition can be found at the Chelsea City Office, 500 Broadway, Room 306, Chelsea, Mass. Or you may email F M E L A R A, F Malera at Chelsea M A dot gov for electronic copy. So if there's anyone here tonight that would like to speak in favor, or rather, on the proposed eminent domain taking, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thomas Ambrosino, City Manager. I'm advocate for the votes necessary for this eminent domain taking and for the appropriation votes necessary to provide the funding for it. So we did have this subcommittee meeting last week where we talked at length about the details behind this, but basically, this is takings required for the reconstruction of Upper Broadway from City Hall on, up to the Revere Line. And for the most part, these are sort of insignificant inconveniences to residents. They fall into two categories. There are nine permanent easements we're taking. In most cases, these are small, very small slivers of land, mostly existing sidewalk that we unfortunately don't own because of mistakes that were made 150-odd years ago. And so we're taking a permanent easement on those slivers and we're paying the owners for this, for taking this, these permanent easements. And that's just to simply ensure that the city will actually own the whole extent of the public way, both street and sidewalk. The second and the larger majority of these are temporary easements, more like short-term leases to pay people for the inconvenience that the workmen are going to have to access the edge of their property. Mostly, this is so that the workmen on the project can ensure there's a smooth transition between the edge of our project, which is usually the end of sidewalk, and their property line. So a typical situation is someone has a driveway and it's intersecting with the sidewalk. Our workman, the contractor, has to ensure that there's a smooth transition between that driveway and the sidewalk. Sometimes that will require a little tiny bit of work at the edge of side, at the edge of driveway. And the workmen need to be standing on their property and doing work on their property. So we're paying people for the temporary nature of this intrusion on the edge of property. So I'm recommending that this is necessary. These are necessary votes in order for this substantial federal funding to be available. We're getting in excess of $10 million from the federal government to do this work. And so I'm asking for the council to proceed with this. It is a necessary precondition before the state can go out to bid on this project. So there are actually five votes that you need to take at the end of the day on this. There are the four appropriation votes, which are actually in your packet for tonight. And then there's one vote for the actual order of taking that isn't in your package. That can be done at the meeting of the 28th. So it's the order of taking, approving that, and then it's the four appropriation votes so that we have the money. The sum total that we're paying everyone in the whole corridor is a total of $312,000. Most individual property owners are getting relatively small payments because the intrusion on their property is relatively minimal. So I ask that the council approve all five of those votes. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that is here to speak on this matter in the public hearing? Seeing none, I will continue that portion of the meeting. We will have the continued public hearing at our next regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll now move on to public speaking. If there's anyone here in the audience that would like to address the city council? Seeing none, we'll move on to next, the number seven, approval of the minutes. The approval of the regular meeting minutes from January 24th. Do I have a motion?
Regular meeting on January 24th and the special joint meeting on February 7th.
Counselor Vido asked that we approve both items, regular scheduled meeting and that of the joint, special joint meeting, meeting minutes on February 7th. Under suspension, seeing no objection. We have a communication from, received from the city manager regarding the notice of waiver for Jody Robinson. Counsel Robinson?
Accept and file this communication. I want to make it known that I do have a brother, Jody Robinson, but this is not my brother. This is no relationship to me.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, the real...
Well, I think it's important to disclose. It's not my brother.
So is that approval under suspension? Okay. As adopted under suspension, we'll move on to the next communication from the city manager. We have a communication received by the city manager regarding the information on the stop to spread COVID testing. Dear councillors, I am writing in response to the recent COVID city council order requesting information on the number of Chelsea residents tested at the stop to spread COVID-19 testing sites. Commonwealth of Massachusetts is supporting two main stop to spread sites in the city of Chelsea, the one operated by the transformative healthcare that currently occupies St. Rose voyeur area and the drive-through site at Beth Israel. City coordinates with the Commonwealth on a transformative healthcare operation, but has no direct involvement with the Beth Israel operation. Both transformative and Beth Israel have provided information to the city regarding the breakdown of testing by residential address. In each case, the reporting dates back to the early December at the start of the Omicron surge. At the St. Rose walk-up site, there was a total of 4,336 Chelsea residents out of 9,671 individuals tested during that timeframe, or 44.8%. At the Beth Israel site, 10,900 were tested with 2,301 or 21% having Chelsea residence. I hope this is helpful. Counsel Robinson?
Suspension. There are no objections.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the next communication received by city manager Tom Ambrosino regarding the Mass Ave Municipal Partnership Grant. Your motion?
There'll be some coming up on the new business?
Counsel Robinson asked that we accept and file under suspension with a waiving of the reading. Under suspension, we'll move on to the next communication. We have a notice of waiver from the city manager with an intent for Michaela Raymond. Michaela, so, dear councillors, pursuant to the administrative code, I am writing to notify you of the attention to high and miss Michaela Raymond, 226 Judge Road Lynn, Massachusetts, for the position of full-time E911 dispatcher and to grant her a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the administrative code. A copy of Miss Raymond's resume is attached. There are currently no qualified Chelsea applicants for this position. I request you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Counselor, there are no objections?
Counselor Vido asked that we sus- adopt, eh, the, adopt under suspension.
There'll be some coming up on the new business?
On the, on...
On the waiver? No, nothing on the waiver.
No, that's not Mass Ave. That's something different.
This is a notice of waiver.
Yeah. We have a communication received from city manager... I'm sorry. Counselor Cooper, did you have a comment?
Yeah. No.
Okay. Communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino regarding the gift to this Chelsea Police Department. Counselor De Jesus asked to accept and file under communication. Will there be something under, under new business? We have a communication received, the city manager Tom Ambrosino regarding a request for the state city address.
Has he already addressed us?
Counselor Vido asked that we accept and file the communication under suspension. We have a communication from the city manager regarding appointments to the boards and commissions.
Mr. President, I ask that you just name the people, but move this to a second reading.
So, dear councillors, pursuant to the charter of the city of Chelsea, I'm writing to recommend the following individuals to the boards and commissions in the city. For Board of Health, Ms. Karina Kuller, 55 Eleanor Street. For reappointment to the Elder Affairs, Mr. Jamie Santos, 14 Bloomingdale Street. For reappointment to the Licensing Commission, Emily Terniak, 183 Congress Ave., Number 2. For Planning Board, William Tuck Willis, 88 Marginal Street. For the appointment to the Planning Board, Sarah Elizabeth Neville, 40 Eleanor Street. And for reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Janice Tatakka, 100 Absom, 100 Bulltwens Way, and Arthur Arsenault, 75 Garland Street. This is moved to a second reading. We'll take this up on February 28th. Next communication?
We have a copy of a communication from the city manager, the Capital Improvement Plan FY23, FY27. Dear councillors, pursuant to my obligation under Section 5-4 of the Chelsea City Charter, I hereby submit to you my proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2023 to 2027. The enclosed cl- capital improvement plan continues the city's commitment to utilize our reserves and fiscal spend for the purpose of enhancing the quality of life in our city. The proposed total investment for FY23 is in excess of 24 million. The list of projects includes major building and roadway projects, climate, resiliency efforts, and open space improvements. This is the first year that the CIP plan reflects funding from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. As I have previously mentioned, it is my goal to allocate significant APF funding to capital projects. The allocation for FY23 is 12.3 million. Another 6.6 million in APF funding is proposed for the ensuing years, mostly for the improvement of school department athletic fields. In accordance with the charter requirements, I ask that the city council move this capital improvement plan to a public hearing. Following that hearing and the council's final determination on this plan, I will prepare a recommended order for implementation of the FY23 proposals. I look forward to working together with you to accomplish the goals of this newest plan.
Counselor Robinson?
Under suspension. Move it to a conference. Also request a public hearing and, and move it to a second reading. If there are no objections.
Seeing none, there will be schedules for a subcommittee hearing with the city manager and relevant staff. Also, we will have a public hearing and it is moved to a second reading. We have a next item on our agenda is a communication received from resident Roy Bloom regarding repeating incidents with semi-trailers on Beacon Street. It reads, it's an email and it states, "Hello, I'm a resident of Chelsea since 2020 and serve as a trustee of our condominium building at 131 133 Beacon Street. I'm also a Harvard genomic scientist and work at MGH. Despite many repeating accidents we reported in the past, Beacon Street has been and still is a lawless pass for semi-trailers and big trucks that make their way to the nearby Everett industrial zone. A few years ago, our building was directly hit and damaged by a semi-trailer that..." Yes. Okay. The counsel, she asked, Counselor Judith Garcia asked that we accept and file the communication, waive the rest of the reading, if you want to...
And just for, for the purposes of our colleagues, the communication that you received, it was from a, a constituent who also was backed by 30 other residents of the area. They are seeking for signage that is clear, visible with lights to be placed in key areas to avoid semi-trucks from, from trespassing property. Unfortunately, this had horrible impacts on their property. This was something that was addressed. It was brought to the Traffic Parking Commission. Jeanette Centrone, our, our, our city clerk handled it and they should be having these new signs in the next two weeks. So thank you for accepting and waiving that reading.
Thank you. We'll now move on to unfinished business. There is nothing there. We'll move on to second reading. We have a communication received, the city manager regarding the appointments to the boards and commissions. Just to remind everybody, this was introduced at our last January 10th meeting and we are now voting on the following individuals. For Community Recreation Advisory Committee, Ms. Cavino, 15 Lewis Street. For Appointment to the Youth Commission, Ms. Emily Menjivar, 17 Lawrence Street. And Ms. Isabel Coimbra, 4 Eldred Street. For Appointment to Traffic Parking Commission, Mr. Michael O'Shea, 124 Addison Street. And for the Appointment to the Housing Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Ms. Michelle Diaz, 163 Pearl Street. Do I have a motion?
An ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Counsel Robinson asked for a roll call vote on the acceptance of the communication and also the approval of the appointments.
Counsel Cooper?
Yes.
Counsel Teneri Garcia, absent. Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Arizona?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Julie Garcia?
Yes.
Turn of favor and unopposed. Motion adopted.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Arizona regarding the city council approves a conflict of interest exemption pursuant to match general laws 268A for Ms. Catherine Palencia's position as a member of the Human Rights Commission. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Counsel Robinson asked for a roll call vote on the acceptance of the waiver for Ms. Catherine Palencia.
Counsel Cooper?
We'll wait to, we'll, he'll vote present. Present or you want to wait?
This, this is on... Conflict of interest law. Counsel Cooper.
This is a vote to accept the, the exception for Ms. Catherine Palencia, who's a library employee?
Yes, yes. I, I have it now. Okay. The other one was, I know which one it is.
Okay.
Catherine Palencia, right?
Correct.
Roll call.
So we do want a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Teneri Garcia, absent. Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Arizona?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Vido?
Yes.
Counsel De Jesus?
Yes.
And Counsel Julie Garcia?
Yes.
Turn of favor and unopposed. One absent. Motion adopted.
We have an order introduced by Counsel Brown regarding the appropriation of $112,875 from the General Stabilization Fund, 7020, for the Upper Broadway right-of-way and easement acquisition from a project account 5542120-53000 for the purpose of easement acquisition. Counselor Brown? Do you want to make a motion to accept all five, all?
At four.
All four orders together?
If it's easy. I mean, the city manager spoke on it earlier tonight.
Right. As long as we get eight votes on the first one.
Yeah, we can vote on it.
Okay. So this will be what Counsel Robinson is asking, that we take all four financial matters that are the combined use for the Upper Broadway easement. The, all of it is together. And a yes vote will be the adoption of all four financial orders relative to the Upper Broadway project.
Can I just, um...
Counsel Brown, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, we spoke about this. We had some hearings and a lot of us was here last week when we spoke to the resident. So a lot of residents aware of what we're doing with this fund. I spoke to the city manager on it. I spoke to the City Manager on it about the appropriation, and we just need to know that we need eight votes, I believe, on this vote tonight, the board to pass. Mr. President? Think we need eight votes?
Eight votes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Council Vido?
There's four separate orders, do they all require eight votes, or do some require eight and some require six? Because then I would suggest.
The general stabilization account requires eight, the others follow, I believe, seven.
Can we separate it, just for the sake of, I hate to be complicated.
Okay, Council Vido is asking that we suspend, do we hold each one separately? So, the first one is for the general stabilization account that I just read.
Want me to call it?
Roll call.
Council Cooper? Council Teneri Garcia absent, Council Robinson? Council Taylor? Council Lopez? Council Vega Maldonado? Council Arizona? Council Brown? Council Vido? Council Jesus? And Council Judy Garcia?
Absent.
Absent? Okay, so you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor? None opposed, two absent, and motion adopted.
We'll now move on to the next order, financial order introduced by Council Brown. Appropriation of free cash under fiscal year 2017 capital improvement plan for the, from the Beecham Street Casino Traffic Professional Technical Services Project to the free cash balance that is no longer needed and will be transferred at an amount of $100,000 for the Upper Broadway Right-of-Way Easement Acquisition Project. A, Council Rob, I'm sorry, Council Brown asked for a roll call vote.
Council Cooper? Council Teneri Garcia absent, Council Robinson? Council Taylor? Council Lopez? Council Vega Maldonado? Council Arizona? Council Brown? Council Vido? Council Jesus? And Council Judy Garcia absent, okay, nine in favor, none opposed, two absent, motion adopted.
Our next order is an order of the appropriation of $50,000 in free cash from the fiscal year capital improvement project 2020. The CDBG 6 Walnuts Road Improvement Project to be transferred over to the 50th, Upper Broadway Right-of-Way Easement Acquisition Legal Project for the purpose of easement acquisition.
For one vote, act for a roll call vote.
Okay, Council Brown asked that we take these last two together. No objection?
Council Cooper? Council Garcia absent, Council Robinson? Council Taylor? Council Lopez? Council Vega Maldonado? Council Arizona? Council Brown? Council Vido? Council Jesus? And Council Judy Garcia absent, nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, motion adopted. On both items. That's it for second readings, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to new business. First order under new business, order introduced by Council Arizona. Order that the City Manager request the MBTA to have a community meeting in Chelsea to discuss alerting the MBTA number 117 bus route to travel through Crescent Avenue and Clinton Street.
What's the will of the council?
Move to adopt under suspension, if I may speak on it, if there are no objections.
You got the floor, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, one of the matters that had come up during the discussion of the Forbes project was the possibility that there was going to be, as part of mitigation, maybe some sort of mitigation to limit the impact of traffic in that area, was the project developers were going to have some sort of shuttle service. But what that discussion led, or at least to me, was the awareness that that whole corner of Chelsea does not have any sort of nearby public transportation bus stops. The 117 and the 116, as far as Chelsea goes, are duplicative in their route. They enter from Meridian Street, run down Park to Hawthorne, to Bellingham Square, and then straight shot down Broadway. And only in Revere does the 116 and 117 then have two different routes. But the 116 and 117 here in Chelsea are basically identical. We have a significant amount of residents living there in Chelsea, and I think that it would make sense for us to explore, ask the City Manager to, in his regular conversations with the MBTA, to ask about possibly rerouting the 117 bus. Why I picked the 117 bus is because that is the one that is the one in Revere, it's the closest right, and it's the fastest one to one to land. And so, the idea being that if you are coming from East Boston, and once you pass St. Rose, that the 117 bus could possibly take a right down Crescent Ave, follow Crescent Ave all the way across Eastern, pass the Berkowitz Complex, and then turn and go down Clinton, and then a right on Broadway into Revere. And that same route coming back can be done. Because we have the Clinton Courts housing projects, we have, like I said, the residential there, we have a school there that could possibly have students that are taking advantage of the school bus, teachers, and so forth. And I would think that, anyone looking at this, if you are at that end of Crescent and Clinton, and you have a carriage or you are elderly, to make someone walk, I mean, half a mile or more to the nearest bus stop, makes no sense whatsoever. And I don't want to wait until maybe Forbes happens. You know, we already know that it's being held up, that the owner who bought it and permitted it is facing financial stress, that it's on the market, that there have been no immediate buyers. So, I don't want to wait till possibly the next mitigation deal to make this happen. I need to have this discussion now, and I think we should have this conversation to see if the, makes, I think, the most perfect sense, just to see if they can have an alternate bus route there. There's not another part of the city that does not have bus service. Admiral Hill has a bus, yes, we complain about the frequency, but at least they have a bus. Prattville has a bus, Central Ave has a bus. So, I think that it would just help the, that corner of the City of Chelsea, to see if we can't make one little adjustment to that bus route, and see if we can't get a couple of stops there. And it would be either equal or less than to the current stops that they already have on Broadway. So, the speed would not be any different. But, again, I hope we can have a discussion about this, and maybe we can bring some much-needed bus transportation service to that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
The order is adopted under suspension?
Adopted under suspension, yes.
Before someone else speak, so is the order, it says, order that the City Manager request the MBTA, that a representative of the MBTA, or the, is that what we're trying to have the City Manager have a representative of the MBTA to do a community meeting?
Well, well, I guess the MBTA general manager.
Okay. So, order that the City Manager.
Or designate.
Request the general manager of the MBTA?
Or, or, or their, or their designate.
Okay, can we get that, just to add that, because it doesn't say that. Okay, thank you. Council Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say this is a brilliant request, and I think there's a lot of appetite for this conversation to happen. I know that Green Roots actually hosted over the weekend a focus group with Chelsea residents to have discussions around public transportation and MBTA and bus routes. I think that what, I look forward to hearing and seeing this happen. We're not asking, it doesn't sound like the councilor is asking to reinvent the wheel. This is a bus route that has existed here for years. What we're talking and the underlying issue that I'm hearing is accessibility. Let's make our transportation accessible in our community, this is not too much to ask for. Chelsea is a 1.89 square mile community. Making these transitions and these shifts is about giving access to folks, and I definitely look forward to expanding this conversation and bringing other groups in. I know that this is the time to do it. There was a focus group created over the weekend, there was a good turnout that Green Roots had. So, let's expand that conversation, and let's bring it more to the city level and see what we can do. But this is brilliant, and I look forward to supporting a measure like this if it were to be brought up formally to us from MBTA.
Thank you, Council Garcia, anyone else like to speak on the motion? Okay, next one. I'm sorry, Council Jesus, please.
I'd just like to echo that transportation is extremely important for our community, and I look forward to having these conversations with the residents of the community in District 3, and getting to know more of, you know, what would fit best for them in that area. But also looking forward for the conversations.
Thank you, Council Jesus.
Next order introduced by Council Arizona and Council Teneri Garcia. Order that the City Manager expect DBW to paint a crosswalk from 148 Washington Avenue across to Johnny Ruiz Park.
What's the will of the council?
Suspension, if I may speak on it.
Adopt under suspension, you have the floor, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Again, it was, I'm co-writing this only because originally the District Council Teneri Garcia was going to introduce it. She asked me, you know, one of those normal, I'm a newbie, how do you do this? And I explained it to her, but then she had to go and, she's traveled. And so, I said that I would just carry the water for her and introduce it with her. Her, her understanding of the situation, what she's trying to address is that the residents, particularly those at 14 Bloomingdale, when they want to cross the street to visit the Johnny Ruiz Park, there is no crosswalk at that location. And so, at that corner, she's looking to have a crosswalk painted there so that they can safely cross. And this probably is going to be more than just painting a crosswalk, there's probably going to need some sort of sidewalk work that needs to be done there. But I hope to present this, or again, send this to the DBW, and then maybe, I don't, again, I don't know if this goes to Traffic and Commissions, even I don't know at this point, but I think the, it definitely goes to our DBW, and then let them come back to the council with a plan. But it's a request being made for the residents of 14 Bloomingdale.
Anyone else have any speak, would like to speak on the motion, 148 Washington Ave? Okay, with that said, no?
Next order introduced by Council Judy Garcia, Council Jesus, Council Vega Maldonado, and Council Teneri Garcia. Request that the City Manager look into any legal action that the city might have in pursuing a reduction of the overall cost of construction for the new Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School to make the debt service equitable among all 12 cities and improve the admissions process.
What's the will of the council?
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension, if there are objections, and I wish to speak on it.
Okay, you have the floor, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you guys know the issues with this, and I'm glad that, you know, I don't have to convince the councilors here. We presented ourselves as a full body, not only as a City Council, but also school committee members, Superintendent Tom Ambrosino. We knew before that special election took place in January that we were not in favor of this expensive Northeast project. It costs a lot for a city, and it's going to create a predicament for our community for the next 30 years. So, the vote happened, Chelsea voted against it, and the other 11 communities, with the exception of Saugus, voted in favor of it. So, now we are liable, and we need to pay for this. But this request is a simple request for the public that is out there listening. The request is to ask the City Manager to look and come back to us with writing of what are some of those legal actions that we can take to tackle any of these three issues? Either it being lowering the cost of that construction, either it being making the debt service more equitable, which is something that, you know, we all agreed on, that we figured, you know, it needs to be more equitable. And if there's anything legally we could be doing to improve the admissions process. So, I look forward to seeing what the City Manager comes up with in terms of what legal action we can be taken. And if there is any legal avenue that we can take, I hope that all of us as a full body can come together and co-sponsor that and support that, if that were to be the case, or if it's even feasible. Again, we don't know what's feasible or what is not, but the hope is that the City Manager can come to us with a legal understanding of what we're able to do here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other council like to speak on the matter? Other councils so speak, that's the end of that.
Next order introduced by Council Garcia.
I'm sorry. Council Maldonado, would you like to speak on the previous order?
I would like to echo what my colleague, Judith Garcia stated, and as she stated, we all are in agreement that this is a hefty, hefty cost, and I, we, this is something that we definitely need to look into, and something that I do want to speak on in terms of the admissions process. And the reason why I want to highlight this is because I have received phone calls of constituents and parents saying that it is challenging for them to get their children in when they're not an A and B student. And being that this is a vocational school, I feel like we need to do better to ensure that students that can benefit from, you know, the technical programs that they provide, that they have the ability to go there. And so, I think it's extremely important that we are equitable in our admissions process, especially, you know, if we're going to pay for this school, we need to ensure that our youth that will benefit the most of going into the school have the ability to get in, just, you know, like, in the door, por lo menos, you know? And so, I just want to highlight that because this is something extremely, extremely important to me, not only as a City Council, but, you know, as a mother, and this is probably something that I, I'm going to look forward to, or, you know, conversations with my children long-term. So, this is an issue that needs to be addressed ASAP.
So, as a maker of, one of the makers of the motion, are you asking to add that into this?
No, it is, it is. I just want to highlight, like, I just want to mention, highlight and stress the importance of that because this is an ongoing issue that I have had constituents call me on. And so, I want to make sure that.
The admission process? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the motion? Okay. I'm sorry, Madam, Council Devaux?
Mr. Vice Chair, I actually have not been involved with.
I'm sorry, Council is talking.
I haven't really been involved with this process, but I do want to commend my sister councilors for taking the initiative to talk about this. I actually went to Northeast, and it was just as hard back then to get into the school, and it is something that we often do see. So, I do think it's important, so long, we didn't want to pay for it, but as long as we have to, to make sure that we're ensuring that there's an equitable admission process, to make sure. As my sister counselor mentioned, we have so many people that come here from other countries that don't really speak the language, and can really benefit from a training where they're learning to work with their hands. And so, it would be nice if all of our students had access to that. So, I just really want to commend my sisters for bringing that up, my sister councilors for bringing it up. And I'm really looking forward to seeing that conversation because it is an ongoing issue that has existed here. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Devaux. Anyone else like to speak on the motion? Okay.
Next order introduced by Council Judy Garcia. Request that the Traffic and Parking Commission please on their agenda to look into repositioning all four stop signs located at the intersection of Arlington Street and Second Street to increase vehicular and pedestrian safety.
I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension, if there are no objections.
No objections, you got the floor, you'd like to speak on it?
Pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
That's it, next order? We have one more?
Next order introduced by Council Cooper. Request that a Subcommittee on Conference with Scholarship Committee to discuss eligible criteria for Banker Hill Scholarship.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, if there are no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, Council Cooper, you got the floor.
For, for years, we have this. For years, we have this fund that allows high school students to go to college. But yet, I've been here many years, I don't know how this function works and I don't know. I've, personally, I know people, they wanted to go to college, but couldn't go to Bunker Hill because supposedly they didn't meet the qualifications. This fund is to help anybody, anybody that wants to go from the school. What if a child doesn't meet all As and it's B? So he should be discriminated against and not be allowed to go to college because of it? I want to know exactly how this works and how they choose. Who chooses who goes to college? That is important. We should all know what procedure they use. I ask anybody here, does anybody know how it works? I don't know how it works. I know that we give the fund. We don't choose. We have no, the only reason why I brought this up, because somebody brought it up to me and asked me they would like to go to college and they were denied to go to college. And there was someone that was in a REACH program. So that person wanted to go to college and couldn't go because he said he didn't qualify. So we made this fund for any student that wishes to go, that graduates high school. That was the whole purpose of it, to allow any student. You shouldn't be choosing. Like people that go to REACH, okay, they're not as, the same level as the other ones. But if they wish to go to school, they should be allowed to go to college. They shouldn't be denied. This fund was particularly made, especially for any student of this city that wanted to go to school, they couldn't afford it. So it shouldn't be denied that he can't go to school because he's in a REACH program or because he's in a program that doesn't. I want to know exactly how it works, how they determine who goes. I think it's fair that all of us should know exactly how it works. And this fund, I'm going back to the same thing, was done to help the children of our city. So every child of our city matter, everyone. So everyone should have the same opportunity. Thank you.
I would like some clarity if anybody here knows.
Yeah.
To the chair, can we ask the City Manager to clarify what the councillor means within respect to the Scholarship Committee?
Mr. Manager, there's no objections?
Yes, so the fund that's being referenced here is the scholarship fund that this city council appropriates money for. It is a scholarship fund to allow graduates of Chelsea High School to get free tuition for their associate's degree at Bunker Hill. We have left to the school department how best to administer it. My understanding is there are some criteria they require. I think it is that you start taking some early college courses with Bunker Hill before you graduate. And there is some minimum standards for how well you do in those courses. I don't think you need to get an A, but there are some minimum requirements as to what you need to do. You start with these early college courses at Bunker Hill. And if you meet their requirements, then you are eligible for this scholarship if you choose that you want to continue at Bunker Hill. And Bunker Hill provides some resources to this scholarship in addition to what the, that does. So it is a real partnership. I don't think there's any problem with having representatives from the school department come up at a subcommittee and explain to the city council exactly what those requirements are because we will be, again, like we have done for the last three springs, asking to provide more money so that the graduating class from 2022 can take part in this program. And this is costing us roughly about $300,000 a year, God bless you, which I usually recommend in a free cash appropriation, and that'll be the same this year.
Okay, so is there a scholar, I'm asking you to the.
So, so that's, I believe that's the purpose of the conference or these questions that we have and now.
No, it's not. I'm actually trying to.
So let me just clarify, I think your next question is, there is indeed a scholarship committee.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrosino.
But that committee really deals with the broader scholarship stuff, not just this specific thing. I think what you really want is a representative like Almi or one of her department heads to come up and they'll be able to absolutely clarify what the eligibility is for this specific scholarship.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrosino. So I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we include Superintendent Almea Betis, and she is the one with the information per what the City Manager just spoke. So that way, when we have a subcommittee on conference, we're actually getting work done. Thank you.
Is that okay with you, councillor?
Yes.
Okay.
We should know how they administer these funds and everybody should be entitled to them. That's what we voted on. We voted on giving the children of this city an opportunity to go to college. All taxpayers' money I put there.
And keep in mind, we have a delegation, a member for the school committee on our body. We can actually send requests also to get all this information. That's why we have this person on our city council so we can find out things that we need to know about that, just for a point of clarity. Okay?
Yes.
Anybody else have anything to stay on this order? Okay, so it goes to conference and please make a note that we requested that the school superintendent have a designated bidet also.
He'll invite, when he sets up his conference, he invites.
Okay. Thank you.
The next order introduced by Councilwoman Nada. Order that the Chelsea City Council hereby authorize the City Manager to accept the 2022 Community First Grant.
What's the will of the council?
Move to adopt on a roll call vote, please.
Okay, move to adopt under roll call vote. Any discussion?
Nope, it was self-explanatory. We had an earlier communication.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Coopero.
Yes.
Councilor Tenev Garcia absent. Council Robinson. Councilor Taylor. Council Lopez. Council Vega Maldonado. Councilwoman Nada. Councilor Brown.
Yes.
Council Vido. Council De Jesus. And Council Judy Garcia.
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent. Motion adopted. Next order introduced by Councilwoman Nada. Order that the City Council hereby accept and approve the gift from Mr. James Yost, in the amount of $109, to benefit the Chelsea Police Department.
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote.
Adopt under roll call vote. You got the floor, Mr. President, if you'd like to speak. If not.
I think it's self-explanatory. I just want to thank Mr. James Yost for the donation to the Chelsea Police Department in the amount of $109.
Councilor Coopero.
Yes.
Council Tenev Garcia absent. Council Robinson. Council Taylor. Council Lopez. Council Vega Maldonado. Councilwoman Nada. Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Vido. Council De Jesus. And Council Judy Garcia.
Yes.
Okay, ten in favor and none opposed, one absent. Motion adopted. You now have the home rule petition before you introduce by Councilwoman Nada. Whereas the city of Chelsea is undergoing.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Two identical items. I want to send this to a subcommittee on conference and also to a public hearing. And I will be speaking this, the, about this on the next order, which is similar. The local adoption of the order requires also an accompanied home rule petition, but they are the same language. So rather than have our city clerk repeat himself, I ask that the, this one be waived and that we read the subsequent order and also will make a motion similar to what I just done.
So which one you want to?
Right now, I'm saying that the home rule petition be sent to a subcommittee on conference and also schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
Now, the next one, also that type of order?
That's the same order. I would write the same order, but this one you may read.
But you may, okay. But you want to send it to the subcommittee and the public hearing also?
That's correct.
Whereas the City Council recognizes the large planned or special permit development projects can have both positive and negative impacts on the community. And whereas an established body of law supports a municipality's right to require monetary contributions in connection with commercial and/or residential development, including conditioning a development permit upon the payment of such contributions when a reasonable relationship can be demonstrated between the required fee and the government's legitimate purpose. And whereas in order to balance out these impacts, the City Council works with developers to address the social impacts through advocating for the provision of community and public benefits. And whereas the City Council also works with developers to address environmental impacts by providing physical enhancements mitigation. And whereas the City Council considers both the impacts and needs of the immediate area as well as throughout Chelsea. Whereas the City Council, as Chelsea's duly elected legislative body, is responsible in both identifying the impacts and determining the appropriate mitigation. And whereas the City Council orders that the determination efforts be fair and reasonable, that mitigation for environmental impacts of a proposed project be comprehensive and that mitigation for social impacts be appropriate and not excessive.
Yes. Well, the council acts for it to be read.
If it's going to a, going to a subcommittee on conference, you said.
Entering of public record, that it at least be read once so that the public does.
Just the resolution aspect, not everything, right? Like just the whereas, I mean, look, that's fine. Go ahead. Sorry.
I mean, if, since we have in a public meeting, if you, I mean, you're the maker of.
That's fine. That's fine.
It's up to you if you want us to continue.
Again, I mean, technically, I know there's a lot of technicality here, but there would be plenty of time, I guess, for the public to read and I'll speak on it and so forth, but.
I'm sorry, Council Robinson.
Motion to summarize what's in here.
If I can, I'll rise to try to explain this and also make some of the beginning points. Hopefully, I won't go over the five-minute mark.
Maybe we shouldn't let them read it.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry, Council Devoe. What's your motion?
My motion is to send this to a subcommittee, a subcommittee on conference and to also schedule a public hearing.
And waive the rest of the reading.
And waive the rest of the meeting. Not the meeting, but the waive of the rest of the reading.
Reading.
Yes. And I'll speak on this.
Okay. You can, you have the floor. You can summarize now.
Thank you, councillor. This is something that I have been working on for nearly a year now. I tried to address this concern as part of the charter review. And the charter review was that I made a suggestion that the City Council have some sort of power and defining vote over mitigation happens, in particular with special permits in our community. Right now, as it exists, any mitigation deal, and I have seen it in the past, and again, I'm not trying to throw any shade on the current City Manager, but just in general, mitigation of any project has been negotiated in that corner office without public input. And a City Manager may say that he hears from all sides and tries to negotiate the best deal at times and asks for certain mitigation, you know, in discussions there. And then it gets somehow wrapped up into a conditions, you know, agreement with the, as part of the special permit. But that's not really, I think, the light of day. And I tried to put something in the charter, but was told that legally it was not possible. And at least through the charter. And when I introduced the order, it was still the same thing. And we had a meeting last fall and the City Manager, in order to assist my concerns, addressed them, said, look, there is a method. Other communities do linkage fees. It's similar to what you're trying to do. We have a rate. We charge the rate according to the size of the project. We collect the rate and then you guys can decide how you're going to use that money to mitigate the impacts of that project. The only problem I had with that, quite frankly, is no two projects are alike. A 10,000 or 24,000 square foot project in Site A may be more impactful than a 24,000 square foot project over here. So, you know, that's my only issue with it. But at the end of the day, I just want to get something done. And it may not be perfect, but the fact is, it is what other communities are doing. And the City Manager doesn't have the power anymore to try to, as he said, look, I don't want to sit with a developer and try to negotiate the best deal and I give one guy one thing and another guy something different. This makes it very easy for my job. I say, here's the rate, pay it, case done. Fund goes over here. And then as you read in here, similar to what other communities are doing, particularly the city of Boston, the City Council can then spend that money on mitigation in different programs. Boston's neighborhoods routinely receive mitigation money and they use it for a number of issues, whether it be traffic improvements, social programs, supporting sports leagues, the whole gamut. And the beauty of this is it's public, it's transparent, and the control rests with its elected leaders as it should. If there's any lobbying that's going to be done, this is where it's done. And we are held accountable for our votes. And we are, I think, the best body to decide what this community needs. We hear from the community, all sides, and then we say as a vote, this is what's going to happen. It's kind of similar to the CPA, except there's, you know, obviously we have CPA group who makes the nominations and then we approve it, but similar. Again, I look forward to having a further discussion. The technicalities is basic. It's depending on whether it's a residential, mixed use, whatever. There's a formula there, a rate there. And at some point in time, if we need to increase it, there's an escalation factor in there to move this along with inflation. So I look forward to putting this on the books so that large projects, and we should act quickly because there are some on the horizon. And I want to capture that value before it's lost. And so that we have an avenue to really put this in a, we can have mitigation in our books in a transparent and open process. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, last order of the, last order, Mr. President.
Home rule petition. Whereas homeowners in the city of Chelsea have been burdened with high sewer and water rates due to escalating MWRA charges and the need to upgrade obsolete water and sewer infrastructure in the city. And whereas the economic impacts of the COVID pandemic have exacerbated financial pressures on Chelsea homeowners. And whereas a program providing for rate relief to homeowners similar to the residential exemption provided to taxpayers will ease these financial constraints and now therefore be it ordered by the City Council of the city of Chelsea as follows. That a petition to the General Court accompanied by a bill for a special law relating to the city of Chelsea be filed with an attested copy of this order, being hereby is approved under Clause 1 of Section 8 of Article 2 is amended. Of the amendments of the Constitution of Commonwealth of Massachusetts to end that legislation be adopted precisely as follows, except for clerical and editorial changes or form only. An act authorizing the creation of a residential exemption for water and sewer charges in Chelsea, being enacted by the Senate and House Representatives and General Court assembled by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, the city of Chelsea may establish a program allowing any owner-occupant of a condominium unit, a single-family, two-family, three-family home or four-family home to receive a reduction on the water and sewer bill for the entire premises equal to 20% of the entire bill. This reduction shall be in lieu and supersede any other exemption or reduction to which the owner is otherwise entitled on the water and sewer bill. Section 2, in order to qualify for this 20% discount on the entire bill, the owner-occupant must have filed and been certified to receive from Chelsea a taxpayer residential exemption pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C. Section 3, this act shall take effect as of July 1, 2022 and shall apply to all water and sewer bills issued on or after July 1, 2022. and shall apply to all water and sewer bills issued on or after July 1, 2022.
Counselor Recupero?
There's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
You can adopt under suspension.
Huh?
You cannot adopt under, uh, suspension. This is a home rule petition.
But we did that before because it has to go to-
Let's, let me explain. If this is a home rule petition, then you would need to ask that this be sent-
To a-
To a public hearing-
I know, I know.
And not passed under suspension. So if you want to move this to a public hearing-
Yes, I want to-
You can make a motion to send this to a public hearing.
Okay, and I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, so Counselor Recupero asked that we send this to a public hearing and that he'd like to speak on this matter. So you have the floor, Counselor.
Okay, this thing was done before, this order was done before, to help the homeowners of this city. It, it's really not up to us. This is just us trying to help the homeowners that are here. After this goes to a pub, it was supposed to go to a public hearing, but it, but that's okay, that's another story. So what happens is, what this does is, we put it forth to a public hearing, then it goes to the State House, and the State House has to approve whatever we want to do for the homeowners of this city. And it's, this is the first time anything like this is ever done, and maybe it won't go true, and maybe it will, but it never hurts to try to help the homeowners that are here. We only have something like 18% homeowners in this city, 18%, that's very, very little. 20%, if you give every homeowner in this city 20% off the water, it's about 50 bucks a month for a three-family house. For a single-family house, it's about $15. So it doesn't really cost a whole bunch, but it's a symbol showing that the people that live here, that we, the council, care. We do care about them, that we want more people to come to our city. So this is just a way to send it, but we really don't decide on this. Who decides is the State House. So I want the people to understand, we do not decide on this. After the public hearing, if, it goes to the State House, the State House determines. The only thing we, the council, want to do is try to help you a little. That's the whole purpose of this, is try to help and alleviate some of the problem with the water. The water became a mortgage. Water is an essential part of your life, but it's, it got so expensive. So here, I'm trying to help everybody, not only me, all of us, the whole body's trying to help the people that live in, that live and own the homes here, and even the tenants, anybody that lives here, and that, we're not giving them a bunch. 20% is oddly anything for the amount of homeowners that we have here. 80% of our city is not homeowner-occupied. 80% of our city is people that don't, they live here transient, they stay here three, four, five years, then they go away. The ones that are here all the time is the homeowners. And I hope that the state might approve this. More than likely, they might not, because it's the first time. But it never hurts for us to try. So let's send it to a public hearing and send it to the state and let them determine.
10 seconds.
Huh?
10 seconds.
Time is up? Fine. That's all I have to say. It has to do with the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that concludes our regu- our agenda for tonight. At this time, I'll ask if there's any announcements. Counselor Vido?
President, I just want to state publicly, I mentioned it privately to the city manager and to some staff members, but when we have public meetings here at City Hall, we really should have the doors open at least 15 minutes, uh, prior to the meetings, but especially the handicap door. Because if we're having public meetings and the handicap door is closed, what we're really saying is that handicap folks are not allowed to come to public meetings. And we're in 2022, this is something so basic, and we really should do better. We need to be more inclusive. We can't talk about, let's have people come to City Hall if we're not going to open the doors for them. So I just want to make sure that I'm saying it out loud so that the administration could go back and talk to whoever they need to talk to, to make sure that we are opening the doors for public meetings. We are a public building, we are public servants, let's open to the public. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Are there any, um, moments of silence? Counselor Robinson?
Uh, former colleagues, um, dad, Naomi's father, Richard Sabett, passed away. Also a longtime friend of mine, longtime Chelsea resident, Kathy McCarty, passed away. And actually Roy Valentin and Gladys Valentin, their mother, passed away a couple of weeks ago. I think it was appropriate for us to acknowledge, um, all three. Oh, and also former, um, board member, Dick Cernow, who was buried today.
Counselor Vido stated it was Delia Valentine, what was her name?
Delia.
Delia.
Delia, thank you.
That concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you, everybody.